All right, welcome everyone to the November 7th, 2012 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Ms. Weckling, could you please do the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Sherman?
Here.
Councilor Lehman?
Here.
Councilor Clay?
Here.
Councilor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tabke?
Here. Everyone, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Anything from council? Staff?
Nothing from staff.
Do we have any motions to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Councilor Sherman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four, any items we need to pull from consent? Councilor Lehman?
Four C, three... Four F, five.
Four C, three, and four F, five. Anything else? All right. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Councilor Lehman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda is modified.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Whiting. Mr. McNeil, could you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4A1 adopts resolution number 7246 approving the final plat of Crystal Estates located on Townline Avenue between Hillwood Drive and Berryton Avenue. 4B1 adopts resolution number 7243 admitting the current 2012 Southwest Metro Drug Task Force grant agreement to extend the grant through 2013 at the same level of funding. 4B2 declares several bicycles held by the Shakopee Police Department to be surplus property and authorizes a sale or proper disposal of these bicycles. 4C1 authorizes the purchase of one new Toro ground master sixteen-foot mower from MTI Distributing at an amount of ninety-four thousand eight hundred twenty dollars forty-one cents with funding to come from capital equipment and surface water funds. 4C2 adopts resolution number 7248 approving work on the lift station L-16's variable frequency drive replacement and backup control system. 4C3 was removed from consent agenda. 4F1 approves the payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of nine hundred forty-two thousand five hundred sixty dollars and forty-four cents. 4F2 approves the minutes of the city council meetings of October 2nd, October 9th, and October 16th, 2012. 4F3 authorizes staff to spend up to twenty-five thousand for Phase 3 of recommended furnishings and window treatment changes at Shakopee City Hall. 4F4 approves the applications and grants a massage business, excuse me, a therapy business license and a massage therapist license to Kristen Prufel. And 4F5 was removed from consent agenda.
All right, any other discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, we move on to item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anybody out there tonight who has something that's not on the agenda to discuss? All right, seeing none. Item number seven, business removal from consent agenda will be discussed now, so we'll start with 4C3. And this is coming on Scott County's draft capital improvement program. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, the letter was on the table, so I don't know if everybody's got a chance to read it or not, but appears that item six, seven, and eight aren't in our CIP. So, do we make sure that it's not any agreement? Or where do we go from that, I mean, how are we gonna handle it?
Mayor?
Bruce?
Mayor, members of council, council Lehman. The county does a ten-year transportation improvement plan, we only do a five-year. And they did make some changes, like County Road 16 has been moved up. We would have put that in our five-year had we got the information when we were completing our capital improvement program. So, just want to make note of that, that these costs have not been budgeted. Some of them are beyond our five-year. The one, County Road 16, moved up to 2016. We'll have to take a harder look at that in the next budget cycle. But, it's a timing thing. We do ours first, and then the county comes in afterwards.
Councilor Lehman?
I guess the question I have is, are we committed to these items at this point?
Not fully committed. We know they're coming. And we just, the estimates that the county put in is what we use for our estimates right now, and they get a little bit more refined as we get closer to the project time.
What do you ask?
Well, because if I'm understanding, they're coming in sooner than what we are anticipating. So if...
Yes.
If we're anticipating doing them farther out, do we still have the option to do them farther out as we're anticipating? Otherwise, it could put us in a crunch.
Yeah. I think we'll have to take a look at that financially, but I think members of the council have asked for County Road 16 to be moved up in the past. So, it's kind of a county responding to that need, and we'll have to see how we can finance it. I'll have to talk to Finance Director Lilhand and see if we want to make adjustments to this year's budget to show that County Road 16 project in the CIP.
Wouldn't we make adjustments to our CIP of which projects we're gonna do? So if we're gonna do this one ahead of schedule, when we anticipate it, wouldn't we take a different project out?
I guess you can, that's your prerogative. I don't know what project you'd want to take out.
But we'll adjust things when the 2014 CIP comes around, is that...
Yeah.
Right?
Otherwise, we're gonna be way over what we anticipate on spending per year in the CIP on projects.
We'll look at this annually as we do in June, and if the numbers don't match up, we need to let the county know that we won't be able to participate, or they're gonna have to come up with a different source of funding. And that's, it's gotta be a partnership between both jurisdictions.
And that's why I asked if we had that option.
I guess that's, my letter is just stating we have not budgeted these costs, so beware, county.
Right. My concern was I don't want to be stuck into it if we're not budgeted for it, and we can't work it out, or maybe we do work it out and shift projects or whatever, I want that flexibility built in there.
Right. Yeah, and I don't think we're stuck in for 2016. We're not stuck in for 2016 at all by approving this. As well, I think it's really exciting that they're moving County Road 16 up three years? Is it three years from where they had it?
Yeah.
From 2019 to 2016, so... Councilor Lehman?
But when we went through the CIP for roads, we all remember that it's a very tough, delicate financial balancing act. And so now we're moving a pretty major project up three years into a timeline that we can't meet unless some other big project is not done. Or a bunch of money falls out of the sky. So we're all aware of that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, anything in motion to approve the motion?
We do have a modified letter on the table, just want to make sure that that's there, and that really just requests that where appropriate, that flashing yellow, which is a new technology in traffic control, be incorporated wherever possible.
Where's that? I'm sorry. Is that in here?
It's item nine on the letter on the table, Mayor.
Oh, the underline.
Yeah, we underlined it.
All right, Council Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve, move to direct staff to submit the attached letter that was on the table on the comments to the county's draft capital improvement program as it was presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Lehman? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 4F5, establishment of funds for accounting process. Council Lehman?
Not under, I guess I don't understand exactly how this is gonna work, so I thought I would ask. Lions Park Special Revenue Fund, that's one park out of many, why don't the rest of them have a special revenue fund?
Okay.
Namely Tapa.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you on the consent agenda was a, it's a housekeeping item that, as we prepare for year-end in finance, there are several transactions that we look over and determine if they're being handled properly under accounting standards. About a year ago, we started pulling apart the escrow funds that have been established in the city, and escrow funds are very unique in that they are specifically for money collected that will be intended to be paid back at a point in time when a process is complete. And in these escrow funds were actual dollars that have been provided to the city. For example, the Lions Park Special Revenue Fund we're establishing, when we talked to the auditors, they felt it was useful to establish a special revenue fund for funds that have been received over several years from the Lions, so that we have an easy-to-follow trail of funds in, funds out. Similarly, the tree replacement special revenue fund, that's a fund where dollars are received for future tree planting. Those are funds that are not going to go back to a developer, but are going to be retained by the city. Qualifies under the category of special revenue funds. And the seal coat dedication, we worked with the engineering department, Mr. Looney and Mr. Swantec, and talked with them about if funds were collected over a period of years back, some part of the dollars being escrow, some parts of the dollars being for future seal coat purposes. Those funds that were collected for seal coat needed to be in a special revenue fund dedicated for future city use. The road expansion dedication project is another area where we worked with engineering and had talked with them about, in the event that there is future road dedication on a couple of projects, the work itself would be capital, hence the capital project funds. So, in reviewing these projects and these collected funds with the auditors, it was determined that we would need to establish new funds, pull the money from escrow, and maintain these for future ease of accounting.
See if I understand this, Mayor. So, like the Lions Park dollars that we get, they're from the various associations that use it, we don't have a fund for them, we put them into park and recreation?
No. Right now, what we've had is several donations over years past where the Lions Club has given a contribution. Those were blended into an escrow fund. We're pulling those apart and making a Lions Fund that clearly only shows revenues that come in from the Lions Fund and are expended for Lions Park.
So what do we do for Tapa Park? Funds that we receive from Tapa Park for various improvements?
Was that the one for the scoreboard?
Well, we did scoreboards, we did lighting, we did bleachers, all kinds of improvements over the last ten...
Right. And those were funds that were maintained under escrow and paid out under escrow. We're saying, under current accounting standards, you don't recount for those under escrow funds. We're trying to separate these out to be more consistent and accurate with accounting standards.
I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't have it for Tapa Park if we have it for Lions Park.
There's no money to be...
As the funds are expended and reduced down, then there's no money we need to move. If there's funds that are currently sitting in escrow that need to be moved out, that's why this action is done.
Okay.
Okay?
And then the revenue for the seal coat dedication and road expansion dedication, where does that revenue come from?
That was a project that had been done, oh, back in the early 2000s, late 90s?
Even before, are you talking about Dominion Hills?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was even before I was here.
Right. This is a project where funds have been collected, I think it was in the early 90s?
Yes.
And we pulled apart the original developers' agreement and realized, as we went through and looked at what had been collected, for what purposes, there was a specific piece in the development agreement that talked about funds that would be used for future road expansion. They're never going to be returned to a developer, they're going to be used for future capital.
In that area or anywhere in the city?
In the area that was dedicated.
Okay.
Correct.
Same with the seal coat?
Correct.
Okay. Didn't understand it, so I can't, couldn't really support it if I don't understand it.
There you go.
I'd like to add one, the seal coating that we get, we get from developers, we have a provision now that they will pay for the first seal coat on any new Batum in a street. So that's what's been collected and goes into the seal coat fund, then we use it in our seal coat program.
Right.
Okay.
But what we're dealing with is things we've gone back, the funds that have been sitting in this escrow fund since, we've actually got one that goes back to the early 80s, and we're trying to clean these out and make sure that it'll be easy to track and trace these funds.
All right, any other questions? Anyone report a motion? Council Lehman?
I'll give a stab at this. Make a motion recommending approval of establishment of newly created special revenue funds and capital project funds transferred from the existing escrow fund, Fund 8040.
Okay, second?
Second then.
Second by Councilor Sherman? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 10A1, presentation by Shakopee Chamber of Commerce of a request to study the city's sign ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The Chamber of Commerce has asked for the opportunity to present the recommendations from their study of sign regulations here in the city of Shakopee. Part of your packet is the letter that sets forth their basic findings and recommendations, as well as a copy of rather major overhaul that was done by the city of Duluth that city staff came across. As you know from the report, both the EDAC and the Planning Commission have received that presentation and had some discussion. Both of those bodies indicated that they were interested in reviewing the sign regulations, and so city staff has already begun collecting the ordinances that were referenced in the letter that you have. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Angie Whitcomb, the president. Kevin Weatherill is on our EDAC, but also Chair of the Public Policy Committee, and there are other members of the committee here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. Mayor Tabke, members of the council, thank you for your time and your attention this evening, we appreciate it. As Mr. Leek said, I'm Angie Whitcomb, I'm the president of the Chamber and the Visitors Bureau. I'm also joined this evening by several members of our Public Policy Committee, as well as members from our Board of Directors. Just a little background, just over a year ago, the Chamber of Commerce began reviewing the city's sign ordinance for sections that allegedly were not in line with the marketing and promotional needs of some of our members. We began this work after fielding questions and comments from some of our members that, you know, they were curious how they would apply for a variance, and they were concerned that the sign ordinance, as it read, was prohibiting their ability to market and promote and draw in potential customers. Our initial mission was simply to find out if these concerns had any merit. As we started to look into the document a little bit further and make some site visits to some of the companies that we had heard from, we realized that there might indeed be some room for updates to the sign ordinance as it is written today. Not wanting to just call the city and pass this on and say, you've got a problem, fix it, or just voice that we also now had some concerns, we decided to take a more results-oriented and solutions-based approach. And there started a nearly year-long project by our Public Policy Committee researching not only Shakopee's sign ordinance, but the sign ordinances of similar communities and our neighboring communities. Our purpose for being here this evening is to walk you through that process that our committee took, and introduce our findings for potential solutions, and suggest recommendations for logical next steps. Obviously, a thriving and healthy business community is important to all of us in this room, and we appreciate the opportunity to present the study to you this evening. And with that, to walk you through the process, I'd like to turn it over now to our committee chairman, Kevin Weatherill. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As Angie indicated, my name's Kevin Weatherill, and I'm the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Committee for 2012. When we began this process, actually in December of 2011, our committee met and decided to try and figure out a, map out a plan for how we were gonna go about trying to get our heads around the sign ordinance. The first step we took, and the Public Policy Committee currently stands at, I believe, nine, nine members from the business community. And what we first did is we cut up the ordinance into sections and assigned it to teams of two people, and we spent about two, two and a half months or so going through a process where those teams would report back to the committee and explain kind of what we found out, what we learned about, what you could and could not do with respective sections of the sign ordinance. And our goal with that piece of the process was to simply get an understanding of the ordinance, because none of us consider ourselves experts in it by any means, and granted, every business has, falls into a potentially different section of the ordinance. So, that was our first step, and we went through that process, and then after that, we went to what we kind of call a public comment period, where we set up three meetings for the public at large and for the business community. The first one occurred at the police station community room. The second one, about two or three weeks later, occurred, I believe, at Turtles, was the second meeting. And then the third one, out in the South Bridge area, a few weeks after that. And at those meetings, what we did was, it was simply an opportunity to invite folks to come in and tell us their sign ordinance stories. And we told them that, you know, we hear these things, they come through the chamber, they bring them to the Board of Directors, but we were trying to get some more concrete input from the business community. And we had a remarkable turnout, I think, for that, for that process. We had a lot of really good input. We had some folks from the city, I think the mayor was at one of them, I don't know if Councilor Whiting, you may have been at one of them. And we had a lot of folks from other businesses that we don't regularly see at things, coming and sharing with us some questions and also some comments. We took all of that information, we gathered it together, and kind of tried to compile it as best we could. And then the final phase of our process was to go out and, each member of our committee chose a community that we thought was similarly situated, and we didn't just pick that community, we actually looked individually, each of us, at a variety of communities and settled on one that we thought we saw some things that we liked that other cities were doing. And then we reported back to the group again, that was in, I want to say, August of this year. And then we took all of that information, after we shared with our colleagues what we liked and what we didn't like, and what we found that we thought was some good ideas from other communities, and we compiled the report that's in front of you dated September 4th, 2012. We did, actually, at one point in the process, we talked about attempting to prepare a draft ordinance for the city to look at. As we got into the process, we felt that that maybe wasn't the right approach. We certainly don't have, we don't pretend to have all of the answers. We look at what we did as a starting point. Our hope was to be able to do some of the legwork for city staff to help start a process. In all, we had all, or ten of the eleven members of the Public Policy Committee were involved in the process, and there were, there was well over a hundred hours of volunteer time put into the process in terms of gathering the information, attending the meetings, and kind of putting together the findings. And now that we've, we've got that, what we've asked, and I won't go through, I know you all got your packets early, so I'm not gonna go through everything in the report. After we compiled what's in front of you, we took it to the Planning Commission, actually, I think it was the EDAC first, then the Planning Commission, and then it went back actually to the EDAC for further discussion, because it, there wasn't, the members didn't have it in advance the first time it went to the EDAC. There were two of the members of our Public Policy Committee that are on the EDAC, we did not participate in that discussion at the EDAC level, because we were involved in the process. And what we are asking the city to do is to start a comprehensive review of the sign ordinance, kind of from the ground up, and Mr. Leek has provided you with the Duluth ordinance, which was also before both, I believe, the Planning Commission and the EDAC when we made our presentations. And it actually contains some of the things that, the more simple things that you'll find in the report, it actually has some examples. For example, visual examples of acceptable signage was something that was pretty commonly heard among the business community, is reading the ordinance, it's difficult to find out what can I and cannot do as, can I not do as a business owner? And the Duluth model ordinance has some real good examples of that. One of the common things that we found among a lot of communities that was well-received among the folks we talked to was the idea of a one-page chart showing various things that could and could not be done in size. You see that also in the Duluth ordinance, a couple different charts, and there's a variety of different ways to do it and different types of charting. That's pretty common. We saw that in almost every other city we looked at, and that's not something that Shakopee has. From a historical standpoint, we, we came to realize that by and large Shakopee hadn't had a comprehensive review of the sign ordinance since approximately, I think, 2000. There have been some changes, no doubt, to specific parts of the ordinance since that time, but a comprehensive review has not occurred since 2000, and that was something that the business community came to us at several of these meetings and said, you know, areas like South Bridge and the 169 corridor were in their infancy or hadn't even been developed at the time that ordinance was last overhauled in. And perhaps this is an opportunity to look at, are there ways we can better maintain reasonable signage within the city, but yet provide businesses with a little more opportunity to help draw people into their business? As we all know, we did hear, we all hear this, but we heard a lot of folks tell us that in today's economy, it's not as easy to get folks to come into your business as maybe it was in 2000. And business owners without fail felt like having the opportunity to, to explore some other signage options might be something that would help that process. I know there was a lot of talk, I'll just give one example, South Bridge, when you're coming south on 169 over the bridge and you kind of make the big right turn there to the Shakopee bypass, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to tell what sort of business is out in South Bridge. You can see Sam's Club and you can see Walmart, but other than that, given the elevation of the road as opposed to where the businesses is, are rather, it was, it was something that was talked about quite a bit, that that seemed to be prohibitive. Now, things like that, we can't solve all that, it's a lot of, I mean, MinDOT has their rules and their right of way and that sort of thing, but there may be some areas that we can look at, particularly Woodbury has a really good highway overlay district where they provide for some additional opportunities for signage along interstate-type highways like that. Some other things we saw that we really thought were interesting concepts were, you'll see a mention of the... Some other things we saw that we really thought were interesting concepts were, you'll see a mention of the Master Signage Plan concept from Apple Valley. Apple Valley has, we were really surprised with their ordinance. It's like four or five pages long. It's really short. And the reason it's really short is what they've done is they've implemented this Master Signage Plan concept, which essentially gives a developer the opportunity to plan signage at the front end of a project when it goes through the Planning Commission for approval. The idea being that if you show the city what sort of signage you as a developer want to put in there, obviously, you don't know what business is going to be in there. But generally speaking, you show the type and the size of what you want to put in there. And it's made aesthetically pleasing to the Planning Commission, and it gets through that process. The city incentivizes you doing that by allowing an extra 25% of square footage that would normally be allowable under their ordinance if you go through that process of approval through the city. So they do that. That's the way most of their signage seems to be done, if you review the ordinance. And then there's some very minimal additional requirements that apply to all businesses. But that was kind of how their ordinance is organized as opposed to being twenty some pages long. We certainly found cities that, believe me, were not, weren't doing things that would make sense in Shakopee. We saw some, Bloomington had, I want to say they had thirty-six different sign zones, something like that, within the city. And obviously, we went through theirs, and we, we didn't find much that would really be helpful to guide that process, and that's kind of why you don't see much about Bloomington in here. So with that, what we were hoping is that that would start a process that staff would begin reviewing some of the things we found and hopefully begin a comprehensive review of the sign ordinance. We're happy to be part of that process in any way that staff or the council sees fit. And I'm here tonight to answer any questions you might have. I'm joined by a number of the members of our committee, Lori Brandon from River Valley Paralegal, Michael Morris and Mike Bumgarner from St. Francis Hospital, Gary Hoffman from Ashley Furniture, Home Stores is here, Steve Snyder from Light Tech Resources, and Rebecca Ribich from Brecky Clyborne and Ribich. And I also saw Rob O'Neil walk in after we began here. So these are the folks that helped as part of this process and were involved. So if there's any questions anyone has, I'm happy to address any of them.
Questions? Counsel Sherman.
I guess my first question would be to Mr. Leek. What type of resources, what type of our investment perhaps do you envision in terms of undertaking this work?
Counselor Sherman, members of the council, I haven't done an analysis to estimate how much time may go in on a staff level to doing this. But given the interest in having a fairly extensive conversation that involves business groups in the chamber, I would imagine it will take some time. We're taking a look at, frankly, that part of the zoning ordinance in all of my experience in any jurisdiction that gets the most attention. So I don't have an estimate of potential time. As I said, we've already begun the process of, of collecting the information, reviewing it, with the thought in mind that if the council is interested, we will begin that discussion at the Planning Commission and EDAC because of their interest on the actual ordinances that were some of the basis for the recommendations you see.
Counsel Lehman.
Mayor, I would, I would envision a process like this going something like the Chamber and the businesses get together, put together a rough idea of what it is they're looking for, take that rough idea, give it to staff, let staff kind of mull over it a little bit, maybe bring it to council with staff's input compared to what they've put together, get some input from this body, let staff and the business community go back with council's input and appease any concerns or pursue further on wherever we're in agreement. And that's kind of, that's kind of how I would think it should go, maybe. I don't know.
What do you see different than what's already here?
And, and members of the council, I think that's what the Chamber has done in its initial communication to you. It's identified those kinds of things and concept that it thinks makes some sense based on their review. And what we're trying to do at a staff level is take a look at the source material, see if there are other things that we ought to include in the discussion in addition to that. Part of the reason why I included the Duluth ordinance is quite candidly, because I came across it at our annual planning conference, had a chance to talk with the planner who was involved, and realized that they spent about $30,000 with a consultant out of Chicago, and Duluth has a very extensive in-house city attorney staff. So they were actively involved in the drafting. So my thought is, let's take advantage of those resources rather than spend those kinds of resources here locally. And the same is true for some of the other city ordinances that Mr. Weatherill talked about. Some of those cities have more extensive inputs that have gone into their ordinances than, than we have in the past. So our thought is if the council is in agreement with the EDAC, the Chamber, and the Planning Commission, that we would start pulling together that information for further discussion with the EDAC, with the Planning Commission, and eventually the City Council. The only question that I really had was the timeline that's suggested of about June of next year. I don't know if that's how it will work out, depending on what kinds of issues arise in the discussion, but we would work with that in mind.
Counsel Lehman.
I'm trying to minimize our staff time in this and try to let the Chamber and the business community really draft up the finer points compared to what our current ordinance is. And where the, the real nuts and bolts that need to be changed, if they need to be changed, are, instead of really bogging staff down on this, I'd rather let the Chamber and the business side come up with what, what it is they're really trying to do, and then show the comparison of what we have and what it is they want to do, and give that to staff. And I'm really trying to get away from thirty pages, you know?
And I, if I may answer, Counsel Lehman, that was something that we discussed as a group at the beginning and the outset of our process. I will tell you, as I'm sure Mr. Leek will agree, none of us are ordinance drafters. That's not what we do for a living. Most of the cities that we looked at indeed hire consultants to do this work, and they're paid handsomely to do it. We're all volunteers. Every one of us runs a business or works for a business or owns our own business. And we simply don't have, that's not our expertise. And we came with that original idea of, let's try and write an ordinance. And we started getting into it, and we realized, well, we don't do that. I mean, I know enough from my professional capacity, you know, there are certain rules that you must follow when you draft ordinances. I'm talking high-level things here. I certainly couldn't pretend to do what Mr. Leek does in terms of drafting proposed ordinances. So I understand where you're coming from. It was something we discussed. It's simply we don't have the people that have that skill set to be able to do that and have that knowledge base. And we didn't, we thought it would be better served to show city staff with the recommendations where we, where you can see things that we found that we thought worked well. As Mr. Leek said, other communities that have paid for this and have parts that work well, and we can use those as models and hopefully eliminate some of that staff time. And our goal, believe me, with this was to gather all of the information for the exact purpose you, you've hit on, which is to save city staff time. And to be able to say, hey, look, we'll host the meetings. I know, I mean, if there's an ordinance, certainly the city will have to go through its normal process. But we wanted to nail down what people were seeing as issues, nail down some solutions, and say, here, here's what we found out. This is, this is the best we can do at this point in time as a starting point. But, and I, I wish we could have drafted an ordinance. It's just not something that we have the skill set to do.
And, and members of the council, I might comment too, that we've been through this kind of process a few times in my tenure here. And generally speaking, at a staff level, we have tried to put together the format that's responsive to the ordinance because of our involvement day to day and gotten the substantive, substantive input. One of the potential dangers in this kind of process is that if you are too much into the form of ordinance drafting, the substance can sometimes change. And what happens in the long term is it then becomes a subject of interpretation. You want to make sure that the interpretation is fairly clear. And that's, I think, the substantive discussion with these folks, as well as the Planning Commission and EDAC that needs to take place. So my thought is, I think our staff thought is, that we will try to put together kind of a coherent outline of what would be in that ordinance, much as we did a few years ago with some of the uses in the industrial zones and as we've done with the subdivision ordinance, and have a discussion around that based on the substance that has been provided in terms of recommendations.
Counsel Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To me, clearly, the business community has found some issues with our current ordinance. And they've put a lot of time, I think you mentioned a hundred hours, working with this. I actually did attend one of the meetings, and everybody was invited that, the whole business community was invited in these different meetings that they held at different times and different areas. And I think Mr. Leek was involved in that from the beginning, and city staff had been involved with that. So I like the idea of borrowing from other communities to save some time, and if it fits, for some of their graphics and, and graphs that they have. To me, I think it's important that we listen to our business community, and maybe not all of them are going to fit in in the end, but they've given us a good idea where, what they're looking for in their findings and how staff can move forward with this. So I think they've done a lot for being volunteers, and thank you for your time on all of that. I think it's a part we move ahead with it.
And if I could just add, I don't know if I made it clear, our, our information gathering sessions were not just Chamber members. While the Chamber Public Policy Committee put this on, they were open to the public and they were open to all businesses. And we did have both member and non-member businesses attend those meetings, so they were not simply limited to Chamber members.
Counsel Sherman.
One thing that I just want to recommend in terms of listening to Counselor Lehman and Counselor Whiting both, could there possibly be one more step in the process before handing this over to staff in terms of prioritization of the findings and what the businesses see as could, the items that could have the greatest impact? And perhaps there's a measure of that impact, or if this were to happen, how quickly they could recognize a benefit from it, or some kind of measure like that in order to prioritize. There's a lot of items here, and I think it's, it's all very good research. It just, that may help in terms of directionally with staff, and then also if any objections come up along the way as we look at sending this to the Planning Commission and the EDAC.
Counselor Punt, in the possible solutions section, when we drafted that, actually, they're in order of what we considered to be the most serious or the most frequent concerns we heard. So we tried to do that in the solutions section with our proposals on, on things we'd like to see. Again, some of them, the most common one we heard was the graphic presentations, tables and charts. That's why that was number one, because that was something that came up quite a lot. So we tried to, and it's, I should have stated that earlier, we did try and go in the, in the solutions section and go in kind of a, an order of priority. So they are somewhat prioritized, at least from, from our standpoint.
Okay, because I think that'll just be very helpful.
No, absolutely.
Counsel Lehman.
Mayor, there's a lot in here, and I guess, and maybe I'm missing it, but my concern is that we start this process and we find staff trying to write an ordinance thirty pages long with everything in it to find out that this body doesn't want X, Y, and Z in it. And I'm not saying that there's, just example. And I'm trying to get the X, Y, and Z's out before staff puts all the effort into trying to draft something, if there is anything that comes out.
What is an X, Y, and Z to you?
Well, do we want billboards along 169? If we do, how, how far apart? Or if we don't, then let's not even focus our energy on the billboard part. I'm not saying I'm for against billboards, I'm just saying it's an example. If there is anything that this body is not interested in, we shouldn't have staff working on that, when staff doesn't know what that is.
All right, so stick to this. Is there anything in here that you don't like? Because I don't, there's nothing in here about billboards, is there?
No.
No.
Well, there was, okay. I was just looking at the whole.
I know, but I'm just saying, is that this is a starting point. Is there anything in this, from this starting point that you do not agree with? That we could kill some of those right now?
And Counsel Lehman, we didn't have a single reference to billboards in any of the meetings or anything. That was not something that was brought up.
Yeah, I was looking at the other cities that you have.
They're just examples a little.
Yep. And we don't know exactly what's all going to come back, so.
If there are any, if we move forward with this, and if there are any that significantly concern you that are in this list, not Mr. Leek, no.
It would have to be significantly, three of us.
Well, I mean, if it's, if it's something that significantly concerns you, I, I don't see anything in here that significantly concerns me at all. But if it's something that concerns you a lot, then let them know, and they can talk through it as they, and they may or may not agree with you.
And then I would add just one other little piece is that when we had the discussion on River City Center, their signage allocation, which is pretty unique, if I remember right, compared to many other places in the city. We need to be thinking about, and not just that location, but other locations, how the end result will impact that use or others. So let's say we have, my building, pretty small, you know, if I put a sign up that I'm currently allowed to have, it would look like, it'd look terrible because it'd be way too big for the location. But you could theoretically have a new ordinance that takes existing locations, if they wish to upgrade, could make the situation look off-kilter. And how do we address that? And what do we do about locations like River City Center and others that have a separate situation? Do they now fall underneath that, or how does that work?
I think those will all be things that need to be considered as it works through the process with planning and EDAC and staff. Counsel Whiting.
I would like to hear from the guardian of the signed ordinance, Mr. Clay, on the thoughts are on this. No, you don't.
Mayor, members of the council, the, the one set of items that I think will probably, perhaps not in this process, but in the long term, generate the most interest and discussion relate to the concept of a highway overlay zone or changes in regulations that try to relate to the geography and geometry of roadways and locations. We already get some of that in connection with different signage allowances within our zoning areas. So for example, let's take South Bridge. If the end result is that they, as a retail center PUD, given their locational constraints, could have a sign that's about forty feet tall to address some of the issues, you might find other businesses saying, okay, why them and not me? It's that equity issue that I think might get the most discussion. But I think you just have to work through that discussion as you look at the alternatives, so.
Counsel Clay.
My only comment would be that if we're going to start working, or going to work through this, this process, we should start now rather than wait any, too much longer. Sooner or later, development is going to start picking up in the Planning Commission and other bodies. There'll be, have plenty of things to do, so if we're going to do it, let's start it now.
Okay. And along with that, we've already, recently and over the past few years, I've been told of multiple instances where we've missed out on developments in retail, especially retail side of things, where their retail signage, we've got a list of things that they need to have in order to go to a city, and we don't meet those things. And so we are missing out on retail opportunities and business opportunities in Shakopee because our sign ordinance doesn't match what they, what they need. And maybe we don't want them, if that's what they have to have. But I, I do, and I would rather have a, a sign ordinance that meets that. My only qualification of the action sought is when we do make a motion, I would like to see Dracking City staff to work with Chamber and the business community to continue updating, to have that in there, that it's working together, public-private, in there. Is that all right, Mr. Leek? Does that cause you any issues?
Whatever the council wishes is what we would try to do. I, I do want to make one comment about the last thing you referenced. Because if you look across the country at different communities, I think you will find that some of those business opportunities that the Chamber and you have heard have not come to Shakopee because we don't allow their sign templates. You'll find in communities that have far more restrictive sign regulations. For most retail businesses, in my experience over thirty-seven years, the issue is whether or not there's a market for them. And the sign regulations come fairly far down on the list. So I'm, I'm not sure that we should respond to that. I mean, if you look across the, the city currently, there are a lot of national retail franchises that exist within the city. So I'm a little skeptical about that particular issue. So, I'm a little skeptical about that particular issue on a personal experience basis. And I don't, we've, we've had cases where businesses said, this is our template for building design and signage and if you don't accept it, we won't have it. And I won't pick on anyone, but after the fact, I've had council members and planning commissioners come to me and say, why did we approve that? Because I was just driving through Chanhassen and Chaska and they're there and they didn't do what they did here. So, that's the one thing that I think we want to be examining carefully and taking a look at, you know, if there are businesses that have said they haven't come here for that reason, let's invite them in to have that discussion with the group that we're working with, with the business community here.
And we'd be happy to share the information that we gathered with staff at the appropriate time.
Counselor Lehman.
I make a motion directing city staff to continue working on the updated city's current sign regulations as outlined in the chamber study and with the business community.
Wait a second.
I'll second that.
Then, Counselor Whiting, any discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Two items I'd point out, in my opinion, one is even if you update the sign ordinance, never will everybody be happy.
We know that.
I'm ninety-nine point nine 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 percent sure of that.
We are too. And actually, to respond, Counselor Lehman, these are, as we said in the report, these are some things that, these are examples. We certainly don't expect a sign ordinance that could possibly incorporate each and every one of these proposals. These are just things that we found in response to things that were brought to us. One of the things we found as part of the study was that overwhelmingly, the business community didn't want unattractive signage. Nobody was asking for, billboards never came up. Nobody asked for large, you see the, the large moving television style billboards up on 494, up in Minnetonka, up in that, that's not what anybody wanted at the meetings we had. It was simply an opportunity to be able to better understand and better respond to what businesses were looking at in terms of signage when they, when they put up, when they open a place. But we understand nobody's, not everybody can be happy.
And then, Mayor, the second point would be that once we have a sign ordinance, whether we adopt a new one or keep what we have, especially if we revise what we have, I would strongly suggest against deviating from that in any future development, because now you have a new revised updated sign ordinance and the first thing you don't want to do is change it to appease individual businesses as they come to Shakopee. A billboard out here saying, well, drugs six hundred miles that way.
Right, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Public Policy Committee, for your work. All right, ten E one Quarry Lake Park Concept Plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is being brought to you for discussion, just on a basic concept plan for Quarry Lake Park. At this time, we are not looking to do any construction of this park or look for any funding to do any construction. However, this past year and a half, we've had a couple of different projects, from park projects to street projects, where we've had excess fill. And the council did give authorization at the time to bring that excess fill to Quarry Lake Park, because in this area, this is the northwest corner of the park, the main area that will become the park in the future. It needs a lot of fill. There was a lot of rubble that we had to clean out that our Parks Department had been working on for the past year and a half, cleaning out, trying to get suitable for future development. And so, when we've had excess fill from these projects, we've brought it out to this site knowing that we're going to need a lot of fill in the future. So, as that became apparent, sitting down with the Public Works Department, we've had a lot of questions on, well, where are things going to go in the future? And if we're going to be putting good fill out here, where should it go? Where a building may go, where a parking lot may go, and what we're going to work from. With that, also with the potential, and I know now recent sale of the ADC building to the west, we've had a lot of questions from the people looking at that side of, what is this park going to look like? The first proposal, or the first plan that we had for this park when we did the grants back in two thousand and five and two thousand and six was a pretty extensive plan for the entire site. We're not looking to deviate from this a lot with our current proposal that we're bringing forward today, but just to show you this, this section down here is still owned by Excel Energy. This was the plan back in two thousand and five, that we would just work with them to put some trails in. That is still the plan, but it's not city property, just to let you know that. This plan worked in conjunction with many different entities. We had the OHAC organization to do an environmental center. We had a lot of fishing piers. We had, this here was an archery range, which now, since this plan was done, we've built the archery range down here by 101 and the river crossing. We have an ATV training field, which we potentially still could put out at, at a future park. But when this was brought back to the park board a couple of meetings ago, we wanted to sit down and say, if we're going to build this park in the future, what are the kind of things that we would like to have from it? They still like this overall concept plan with the trail around the whole lake. I believe it's about a mile round, maybe two, now I'm drawing mine blank, but I know it's a good mile, around the entire lake. It would be paved trails, we would put in some fishing piers. This would still be our main area with parking lot. The park board had asked for a larger facility that if we do want to do that collaboration in the future for some kind of environmental center, we could, but then they also talked about picnic shelters. We see this more as a regional type of park, because on the county's comprehensive plan, a regional trail would go through this from the South Bridge area over 169, which Mr. Lonie has tried to apply for a couple of grants for that. Knowing when this is going to be built, then we would apply for those grants again, knowing that we might have a better chance of getting them. And then the trail would head down to the 101, to the Regional Minnesota Valley Trail that goes down to Chaska, past Chaska, and then over to Bloomington. So, this, even though it'll be a city park, it'll be more of a regional connection. So, we people, see people traveling here, riding their bikes over the overpass, doing long trips, but also coming for a destination. It's a lake feature, it can be very nice features and something different that the city doesn't have anywhere else. We do have Lake O'Dowd, we don't have a shelter there at this time either, but we also then have the Water Ski Association, which we would still, with our agreement with them, still put them into the plan. So, what came out of the park board were, we had them look at two plans, one that had two accesses and one that had just one here. We're bringing forward you tonight, the two access one, that was recommended, recommended by the park board. What they recommended was a larger building that we placed on site that could be, like I said, that environmental center. And then we actually have three other smaller shelters that are about the same size as the current shelters we just built out at Westminster Park and Green Meadows. So, they would be used for road re-generating as family picnics, rentals, birthday parties, that sort of thing. Then we designated, the park board talked a lot about, on the original plan, there was no, on the two thousand and five plan, there was no playground out here. If we're going to make this more of a regional destination, if people come, we should have this more of a community playground size. So, this is about the size of what Huber Park's playground would be, to make that more of the community park. And then we have the two parking lots and then the rest is trail. So, we keep it still very basic. By all means, the final concept plan will be brought forward to you and to the park board when we are ready to build it, but we would like to have a plan in place for when we bring fill in, that we have an idea of where these buildings would be built, and to give something to our neighbors to the west that would say, this is what this park generally might look like. So, two things to, that we brought forward to you tonight that we just want your comment on is they have the two entrances. One thing that the Union Pacific Railroad does have a right of way through here and has the ability to build an additional spur. With that, they also may put in a culvert crossing over the Prior Lake Channel. And with that, we have the potential of working in collaboration with them to have them widen the culvert. That might help us with the road coming in. That is something that I know Mr. Lonie has had conversations with the railroad on. So, this, this alignment could change to, if we were able to work with them, we'd have to put it more north, but generally the same area, we'd have to get across that, that Spring Lake Channel. So, we have right now our road, could this plan, the Attachment A plan, shows this road coming through and our parking lots separated to make this more of an open green space? That, the potential for this road to become a through traffic road for bituminous roadways if this crossing over here to the east is closed, could pose some potential issues with the future park if we have large trucks going through there and we have a park here. So, this is the one that park board saw and had brought forward to you, but with that discussion with the railroad, Attachment B, which is very similar, but the only difference is that we connect the two, the parking lots and potentially could close off this entrance and make this an emergency exit only. That way, this would be more of a through street. The main park entrance would be the south park entrance, keeping the park traffic separate from the potential through traffic. So, that is something for discussion. It's, really, that's more of a final design issue, but wanted to bring it to your attention that, that may be something we need to discuss when we are doing that final design, is whether or not that road becomes a through road for larger truck, truck traffic. It will also play into, you know, what kind of culvert we have to put in there of the size and the weight limitations that it would be able to encounter, what kind of traffic is going on. So, with that, I'll answer any questions. I just wanted to see if the city council was on board with this type of design or if you had any further direction that you'd like to see as we move forward.
Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, Jamie, can you refresh my memory? It's a while ago, but is the Easterly Crossing a private crossing used by the Shakopee Prior Lake Ski Club?
Yes, right now, our current access that we have is bituminous roadways private business access that we have a temporary easement per our agreement to use until we have public access. And the only thing is city personnel and the Water Ski Association can use it, yes.
Okay. And, excuse me, wasn't there an issue with the Westerly Access from, what street is that?
Oh, on the, on the other side of.
Yeah, back by Conklin there, there's a road that goes back, but it doesn't go all the way back. Wasn't there an access issue there at one point?
On the north side of Conklin?
It's private.
Yes.
It's private access.
Yep.
Off of Valley Park Drive.
Yeah, we need to get some access somehow through there.
Right, when ADC was building their building, we were working on obtaining easements in order to build a public road to there and then, I mean, we didn't get it, we didn't get it completed.
That doesn't affect this though, does it?
Well, you have to have access to this.
Well, we don't have public access.
Yet, no.
The road that we're showing here, I mean, this is contingent on that ADC site developing and also getting a public road.
Right.
Access back to Valley Park Drive.
Did we get park dedication from ADC?
No.
Okay. So, in the future, at some point, we're going to be getting either land or cash and LWO on that parcel?
Only if they plat the property when they do go to develop it.
Okay.
So, that, that's one of the other reasons why we wanted to bring it forward, because in the discussions with the current purchaser of that, as they're getting potential buyers and going through that possible plat process, we want to have that discussion early with, these are where our public access entrances would like to be, how can we work with you to obtain that? So, yes, that's very much, that's important to this park.
Okay. Geez, my memory's not so bad.
There you go. Any questions?
Counselor Whiting.
Well, I do like the concept of the two entrance parts and the flow through traffic. Just a couple of general questions about the park itself. Is there any potential on this for any kind of swimming beach in the future or anything like that, or is it just too deep, steep, drop off?
Yeah, at this point, the only area that has a beach, I'll get the overview, that hasn't, is, oh, I don't even have the full lake, is this area right down here, which the Water Ski Association uses? But the rest of, and at this time, we don't have any plans and we didn't when we overtook this lake to have swimming on it. We do possibly have plans to do some non-motorized activities in this northern section, because the Water Ski Association, per our agreement with them, has access along the western edge and the southern edge. And then when we do have this public, part of their agreement is that they would have their water ski shows out here and have events in which the city would get a portion of their proceeds and stuff for them to have the public access. But the rest of the banks are all very, very steep, so there isn't that access down to the water.
And then, didn't they want to have some sort of seating or area for that? Is that in that area by their parking area or is this, is that that area you have over in the park itself?
No, it would be, where they would have their general seating is along the slope here by their boat landing. This is a nice sloped grassy area. Then also on the south side of the lake, even though it doesn't, there's a drop off to the water, there is a nice slope too that they, they have a slalom course here and along the south side where they plan to have the seating in the future.
Thank you.
Counselor Lehman.
One of the older plans had the diving in the northern part?
Mm-hmm.
Is that still a part of this? Scuba diving, I think it was.
Yeah, and that's a potential. So, the water area, we haven't really talked about what we could have there, but we do have the potential still also of working with the DNR to stock this area for trout, because it's deep and cold enough. So, that's why we would still have fishing piers, but yeah, in this, we would still have access to this area here, because the water ski, like I said, has here and here. And this would be, just to answer Counselor Whiting's questions, this would be their seating area and then along here, their seating area. So, it would remain the same. But this area here, we had the underwater here, we could have possibly, one of the park board asked if we could have canoe rentals out here, which may be one of our shelter usage, that they could have, you know, canoeing along this area. We'd have to work that out and how we barricade that off or put buoys in, so that the water ski is not interfering with the leisure access of it, but yes, we would still work on that.
No full-fledged beach, but you got other water opportunities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Jamie, is this going through the new park planning process? Is that how you're doing this, how?
Yeah, at this point, we don't, I don't plan on taking it to any residents, because we're not to the point of development or anything yet, and this is more of a business park. But this was to the park board and that's why I'm bringing it to you, as this is the concept we'd like to move forward with, at least for discussions with the owner of the former ADC site. And then, you know, as that develops and we obtain that public access, then it would come back through the process of doing the final plans and any input we would need. We would also then work on our partnerships if we were to continue with those in the development.
Mr. Mayor. Counselor Whiting.
Thank you. You know, you mentioned the business and it came, a thought came to me, would this be a park that could be utilized for company picnics if any of them still do that? The park shelter you mentioned here, is that something, is that going to have any kind of area for that kind of use?
Yes, the, the idea that the park board had discussed, this larger one would have a larger enclosed area, so it could be more of a classroom type setting, but could do some of those larger events. But this is, is something unique that we were talking about is, and we can look at it closer, it's actually, we would make this one large shelter with two open air areas on each side, so the middle part would be like a large kitchen area and then we could rent out each side separately or the whole shelter together, which would allow for those larger picnics as well.
Well, I was going to allude to that. The kitchen area may, if you could get some sort of concession, maybe that would help out the Water Ski Club too and some of their events.
Possibly.
Just a thought.
Counselor Lehman.
Counselor Whiting, I would see it more like Tapa where the group that's utilizing it might come up with their own concessions as a revenue source for themselves.
Right, but maybe the building itself might be planned to work with the way they, they have their events, I don't know.
Possibly, yep. We would definitely have discussions with the Water Ski Association in the development of this, because they would use their part. And also in their agreement with them, though, anything that they would build and improve down by their area. So, we show, you know, a shelter down here and stuff like this, but anything that they, that would be pretty much south of this gate, they would be constructing themselves with their own funds and have to come to the city for approval, but.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Counselor Lehman.
Did you want both B one and two, being that we don't have access locations and stuff pinned down?
Well, just a general discussion that it, it doesn't matter if it's A one, A or B at this point, because I think it'll depend upon whether or not that road becomes a through road for bituminous roadways, that'll be part of that discussion. But just general consensus from the council that this plan, whether we connect the parking lots or not, is one that you support with dual access. is one that you support with dual accesses. So, when we talk with the, the neighbor, you know, trying to get the access across in two locations and the northern one, one, maybe one that we potentially work with the railroad on.
Okay. So, basically, the plan with dual accesses, I kinda like connecting the parking lots somehow. And then, we're gonna figure out how to get trails into here. But that's another day, I guess.
It is. Oh.
Just for update information on the site, Batuminous Roadways is moving their plant over to 101. They're moving their whole Batuminous plant. They still will use that area for storage, bringing in asphalt and concrete to crush up. So, it won't be like a lot of trucks, I mean, it'll be trucks coming in and then we'll crush and leave. And then, the railroad is, has indicated to us they're interested in closing that crossing, which is a private crossing for XL. And they're interested in, so we may have some partners in that roadway project that Jamie had mentioned. And I don't know if we can make that culvert work. We went out there and looked at it today. We, we'll have to wait and see what railroad plans come in and then we'll be able to see if we'll be able to help us or not. But they, they are very much interested in this project and perhaps, I mean, Batuminous Roadways would be interested in helping as well as the railroad. To what extent, we have to wait and see. Now, we got a plan to talk about if, what we.
Is there anything on the plan that the council thinks that we're missing by including?
Off the Stog Park.
That's next year.
Councilman Lehman.
Is the only reason that the road extends all the way across the north to the east is for that private crossing?
Yes.
So, if that private crossing goes away, everything will have to come in from the west? And then, the road across the north is kinda worthless at that point?
To the park probably if it has large traffic, if you want to keep those separate, yes.
But it wouldn't go anywhere?
No, right, it would just, it, at this point, it would just go to the Batuminous Yard over here. You know, in the future, if this ever became where they wanted to get rid of this site altogether and the city could acquire it, that road then could serve, you know, other areas of our park if it became a larger park. But it wouldn't go anywhere further to the east, no.
We wouldn't build that north road if that's closed and we get the west access? Okay.
That, yes, that would be something that the business would pursue.
Okay.
All right. Anybody have a motion? All right, so just so everybody knows, they're up here. Almost everybody puts them right the very first thing now on all the most, vast majority of the memos is, is right up there. Very first thing you look at so we know what, what we're trying to get to.
But that doesn't do any good if you don't tell us.
Well, I've only said it like four or five times. Maybe I was just talking to myself, sorry. I know. Sorry, I'll speak louder next time. So, it's the first thing. Councilwoman Clay.
Make a motion to approve the concept Plan B1 and 2 with or without modifications for the Coral Lake Park.
Right now, it would be without modifications, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's without.
This is you.
Basically, as recommended.
Do we have a second? All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie. 10 F1 Telecom Advisory Committee Recommendation on Paperless Packet Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a subject that was before you approximately two months ago when staff presented a recommendation for moving towards paperless meeting packets for the city council as well as the city's various advisory boards and commissions. At that time, the city council voted three to two not to proceed with the project and then subsequently voted to refer it to the Telecommunications Advisory Commission. That commission has met and considered the issue. The commission received the same presentation and set of information that the council did at its early September meeting. And the commission was subsequently asked to weigh in on four factors. The value of the project itself, whether or not there were logical ways to phase in the project, to spread out the cost, whether they agreed with staff's recommendation on the particular tablet devices in the proposal and whether or not they might support the use of the Telecom Division's R and D funds to pay for all or a portion of the project. Starting with the first item, the commission did see value in the project overall and specifically in the Agenda Quick software, which is a software product that staff was initially recommending. However, they came at it from a slightly different perspective than I think staff was working from. They saw the value not so much in being paperless, but in having access to information quickly and right at your fingertips. For decision-makers up the dais such as yourself tonight, as well as members of our boards and commissions, they felt that having that almost instant access to past packets of material, past resolutions and actions by the body would be useful in decision-making and keeping items moving along rather than maybe tabling them or having to defer until information could be looked up. So, to that end, they did recommend that the city proceed with purchase of the Agenda Quick software. It has the advantages we just discussed for decision-making bodies of the city. It also provides a more user-friendly avenue for members of the public to access the information via the city's website. As far as whether there were logical ways to phase the project and whether or not the Telecom Division's funds might pay for a portion of it, the commission also weighed in that they felt purchase of the software as well as three tablet devices is something that they would support using Telecom R and D funds for and that that was an opportunity to utilize the software and do some additional testing on tablets and how they play into the overall scheme of things. So, the overall recommendation of the commission is that the city council proceed with the purchase of the Agenda Quick software, the upgrading of the wifi in this room, three iPads for testing purposes and some various cables and licenses that need to go along with that. The total price of such a project would be about $25,300 plus some shipping and tax. The Telecom's R and D fund currently has $27,000 in, so enough to fund the recommendation that they're making with a very little bit left over, but not a substantial amount to do anything else with this year, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilwoman Whiting.
Well, I think this is pretty fresh in our minds. Wasn't that long ago we talked about it. I think the TAC hit on it. What I think is most important about this is the ability to locate information and find past minutes. I believe the minutes were gonna be part of that and the, and the agendas and things. And the only chance we get to start utilizing that is by building that up. So, I think that's why I thought it was important and I'm not sure if I articulated that well the last time. We talked about building our website and its depth and I think this is a good start at that.
Other questions? Councilman Sherman.
I'll just comment because I didn't support this in our last conversation in the way that it was presented, but did support sending it to the commission to do the work. And I think that they've done some good work in examining it and, like you said, it kind of have brought a different perspective to the use of the Agenda Quick software. I do like the concept of testing and starting out smaller and to determine the usefulness and kind of future of the tablet. So, I, I like what they've put together.
Chris, I had a resident ask me about the Agenda Quick software and the initial purchase of the software is quite high as well as the, with the annual licensee fee being what it is. He thought that the, it was expensive upfront for how much you pay annually. And was this basically the norm of, because you guys looked at multiple packages, right?
We looked at approximately, I believe we looked at five different software options. And they generally fell into two categories. This was the less expensive category and then we had two or three that were grouped within, you know, seven or eight hundred dollars of one another. So, I would call that the norm. We can go out and find much richer in features and bells and whistles software that costs even more than this. But this is very much in line with the marketplace for this type of product.
All right, thank you. All right. Councilman Lehman.
Does the Telecom Group get a annual stipends for their R and D fund for the following budget cycle?
Yes, the R and D fund on the Telecom Division is now just a general fund budget allocation that this council considers every year when we do the budget process and it comes in that way. It's a little bit of a leftover from the day when all of the franchise fees were being devoted specifically to the Telecom Fund. And the dollar amount of set aside for R and D has gone down over the years as it's become a general fund allocation, but it is still a general fund allocation.
Did we allocate anything for next year?
Yes. I believe off the top of my head, it is $10,000, the same amount that was in this year's, in the 2012.
So, by doing this, which is gonna tap them out, they're gonna have a fresh $10,000 at the next budget?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Comments? I think this is a good thing for our residents to be able to access the information that we're talking about and, and, and working with on a week-to-week and day-to-day basis. I think giving residents easy and simple access to that ability to find the information is huge because if, as we go along, talking about Quarry Lake Park, we can look at what was talked about Quarry Lake Park in 2012 when we get to 2017, 18, if it's not built by then and find out what all has been happening throughout the process. And so, I think that is a much-needed upgrade for our residents. Councilwoman Whiting.
I, I'll make the motion to authorize the expenditure of $26,000 from the Telecom Division's R and D fund for the purchase of Agenda Quick software, three iPads and an upgraded wifi system for the city hall.
Do we have a second? Senator, my Councilwoman Sherman. Any discussion?
So, the public would have access to the information like on a Thursday or Friday?
Generally, our packet is ready on Friday afternoon. Just to be clear, they currently have access to the information. There are links to it on our website. It's just, you can only have no more than 10 people reading it at any one time, otherwise it licenses out. The search feature isn't nearly as user-friendly. So, this is certainly an upgrade, but to be fair, there is access to it currently. But yes, Friday afternoons for a city council meeting and then various boards and commissions are always gonna be, on average, about three business days out is when we wrap up and mail the paper packet. And it would be online, you know, probably half an hour before it goes out the door in the US mail.
Councilman Lehman.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the intent here that they'll be able to use that software to, I don't know, pick an item like Agenda Item X on this day and then go back in time on that item to previous discussions to kinda get caught up to speed on the whole issue as, as it's evolved?
Correct. You would, they're not necessarily directly linked together. You would search just like you would in any kind of search engine. I think the sample, I'm trying to remember what the sample we used in the demo was. Quarry Lake Park would be a perfect example. You would type that into the search. You can narrow your search field by what body you want to see. So, if you just want to see what Park and Rec Advisory Committee said, you would choose, search Park and Rec Advisory packets for this year for Quarry Lake Park or leave off the year and get it to search all years that are in the system. Obviously, it's gonna be from this point moving forward that it's in the system. We don't have a plan at this point to go back in and start entering past data. So, it'll take, you know, several years, I would say, to really build up that rich database. But to some extent, if you table something the first meeting in February and you pick it back up the first meeting in March, you know, that's gonna be right there.
One more question.
Yes.
Will they be able to use this from their home computer?
Yes, it'll be available on any device that has an internet connection.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Halfway.
We brought him along. We moved him, we're carrying.
Okay.
We'll call it opposed.
Okay. Passes four to one.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Councilwoman Lehman in the dissent.
Just to set expectations for timeline, when we originally proposed this, we thought it would take us about eight weeks to get off the ground, some approximately. Given that we're headed to a new year, I think staff will try very hard to start January 1, 2013 so that we can say that we have all data going back to that date when we look forward. But we'll aim for that and we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. All right, council member reports. Start on the other end this time. Councilwoman Whiting.
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Clay.
Uh, the utility commission meeting, let's see. Looks like all the water and over, oversized pipes are in the Valley Creek Crossing development before the frost has hit us. They've tested for leaks and everything's, looks to be okay. Yeah, that's really about it. I can't read my writing.
Uh, October 16th, I think it was, because I missed the last council meeting, so I'm kinda updating from a little bit further back. The joint Spuck meeting, we all attended that. Pretty good meeting, I thought. Got a lot of good valuable information out of the infrastructure needed for the 69, 169 area and the cost. Wednesday, the 17th, did the 69, 169 joint meeting with the townships. The Spuck information was really good to have. Looking forward to the next one of those. And then, Thursday, we had the 169 Corridor Coalition at Canterbury. And what came out of that, they were going to, Canterbury put out a pretty decent presentation of, you know, their future vision for the area and so on and so forth. I don't know if we all saw that master plan that they had here a couple of years back, but economic activity's down now, but they're still, have a new lease on life with the agreement that they have with the Midwakatin. The Midwakatin were represented at that meeting. Can't remember the individual's name. But the Corridor Coalition was looking at putting together these corridor meetings in various locations. So, you know, one down south, one up here and one up in the north to try to get more people that are using that corridor and on that corridor to be active in this group to get the improvements needed. I mean, we know that 169 at 18 is a roadblock in the morning, so there's gonna be some need, needs in that area to, to get traffic flowing. And anytime you can get the folks that are right around that area to, you know, participate, it helps out. Plus, it's, gives funding mechanism from the members to enhance our ability to try to get some of these improvements up on the radar screen, so. I'm on my three in a row for that week.
Very good. Councilwoman Sherman.
I have no report tonight.
All right, things, back on the 30th, I spoke with, went to Rotary Meeting and spoke with Rotary about just what's going on in the city and budget and those types of things. The first, Mr. McNeil and I had a comedy routine that we went to Springstead Symposium. They asked us to speak just about how much of a pain younger mayors are to have in city government.
I was his wingman.
But no, we just talked, they wanted to talk about new people getting into government elected officials and stuff like that. And it went well. It was fun to go talk to. It was mostly administrators and that kind of thing. And then, on the first, Mr. Looney was there as well. We had MDA lockup and overall was 32,000, 31,000? That was raised by everyone and so that was very good. The fourth went to the American Legion and spoke to them at their Early Bird Dinner that they have. And so, that was fun. And then, on Monday, St. Francis, their Community Advisory Committee, talking about community health needs and prioritizing how there's a. and prioritizing, uh, how there's a pot of money, um, that's going to be used by St. Francis and Alina, uh, for some sort of community health. Um, and we're prioritizing it now, uh, it's looking like it's probably gonna land somewhere in mental health, and physical activity initiatives for Scott and Carver Counties. Um, and it's very great program, it will be presented to scale in December. Um, so that is good, that's all I've got. Uh, I don't know, 12, any other business? Councilwoman Whiting.
Oh, one quick question, I don't have my scannable, uh, data right now in front of me, but, uh, uh, the budget we had for voter ID issues, that's now, um, not necessary. We put some money aside for that next year in the budget?
I don't think we did.
Nope.
I think we talked about that, okay.
We talked about using it, uh, if we had, uh, we would do it out of underspend once we knew what was happening, um, if we had to.
Okay.
Councilman Lehman.
Did we all read our Metro Cities Association of Metropolitan Municipalities Legislative Agenda?
Yes.
Morkus, I mean, oh, yeah.
Did we read it?
Yeah, what did you find?
I didn't yet.
Do we agree with it? Because after reading it, it says that we're supposed to get back. First of all, I think that the citizens of Shakopee should be having access to read this. Because if they did, they would probably say there's no way that the ci- city should support half of this. Half of this stuff is either taking rights away or raising taxes or adding additional fees and it's, it's the biggest pile of crap I've ever read in my life, to be honest with you.
So you mean you don't like it?
Yet this is, yet this is the city's official position without this body discussing it or debating it or without the general public having any knowledge of it, so. Uh, I totally disagree with that process and I disagree with almost the majority of what's in it. So I just wanna be on record with that.
Okay, what do you wanna do about it?
Well, what can I do about it?
I don't know, do you have anything that you'd like to get, I mean, it's in the feedback, it's in the draft form, so if you've got major issues writing down, it's under mark.
Individual feedback doesn't represent the city. You know, they've got everything from a city tax, sales tax without legislative approval to creating a, uh, road, road districts, to, uh, uh, change an eminent domain language to make it so that cities can take property easier on a basis of highest and best use as determined by the city instead of the property owner and the use that's currently on there. Uh, and the list goes on and on, so, and ban guns on public property, um, lawfully, lawfully guns on, on public property. So, uh, there's a list of these things and, and I'm not sure where they come from, but they just keep coming from different organizations. This is one of them, the League of Minnesota Cities does the same thing. And, you know, and I've went rounds and rounds with the League of Minnesota Cities about, they need to make this stuff available to the citizens that we represent so that these citizens can have some input in this process. And, uh, that's just not happening, so.
I am our, our representative on Metro Cities, um, and those that you, you're talking about in there, my, uh, interpretation of them is different than yours. Um, what, those are in there, um, to limit states' ability to regulate what cities do. Um, to give cities the power, mo- almost all of them that you just read off right there are giving the cities the power to, to make their own decisions and not have mandated from state. So those are all a collection of things, not saying that cities have to do this or cities should do this or cities, um, want to do this, but if the city did want to do it, they should have the ability to do that, separate from what the state has to say. So with your, uh, ability to ban, uh, legal weapons on public property, things like that.
Yep.
That's, I never think that we should do that.
Federal constitutional question.
But what they're saying, well, no, that's a state thing.
State.
Um, but this, with, what they're saying is that the state shouldn't be telling the cities all the things that they need to do with regard to what the cities want to do. So they're, they're advocating for local control on those issues and, and that's what that is. So I don't see any problem with that at all, they're not saying that you need to ban guns on, on public property. What they're saying is if, as a city, you wanted to ban guns on public property, you should have, uh, separate from what the state says, you have to have the ability to do that. And I have no problem, I, I would much rather have, I think would be much better off, a lot of times, as a city, if we had local control over what we wanted to do. Not that we have to do all the things in there, but what we want to do.
I disagree with you on this particular topic because if you don't have it consistent.
Pick your topic then.
If you don't have it consistent across the state, how is the general public supposed to, to rationally understand what the laws are?
All right.
They would change municipality to municipality to municipality, that's why we have state statutes, which makes it consistent across the whole state.
Okay, Councilwoman Whiting.
The same way you did it, it's, it's, uh, maintaining the city's ability to, to make its own decisions rather than have the state take away those abilities.
Which means that you don't have any consistency across the state.
Well, it gives you an autonomy.
Which is another word for no consistency across the state.
Maybe, yeah.
So.
Quite possible.
So, so, no, I'm, I'm not.
So what you're saying is that you want the state to tell us, I mean, we don't even.
On, on certain issues, on certain issues, I think.
That's a whole different attitude from you, Councilman Lehman.
We have state, state laws, seatbelt is a good example. Should cities decide that, no, you can't, you can, don't have to wear a seatbelt in a city of Shakopee, but you have to wear it in Burnsville, but then you gotta take it back off for Prior Lake and put it back on for Savage? Come on.
I don't think we're going that far with it.
That's basically what you're saying.
All right, Councilman Lehman, do you want any action on, on that item? Or are you just making it known so that as we continue to?
I'll make a motion to let the record note that Councilman Lehman has significant philosophical issues.
Well, and I plan on.
Disagreement with the Metropolitan City's legislative policies.
Second, I'm that recommendation.
And, and mainly the manner, manner that they implement this because they don't have any feedback from the public whatsoever.
What, that's untrue because it's all on their website, it was all given to us.
How does anybody know to go look here?
It is the city that is the member of Metro Cities. And each summer, they send out an invitation for anybody who is an elected or an appointed official to serve in their policy advisory committees, there are four of them. And I realize they meet during the day, but they do provide for opportunities to input. I would say that there are people on those committees, 'cause I've been on them before, who see life very similar to what you do in terms of what government's role should be. It is not, these are not people who are going out there and looking to expand government in every, which way or form. There are very reasoned discussions on those, they usually don't change much from year to year. In a lot of cases, it's a matter of having a policy on record so that they can respond to something that the legislature initiates. I don't know that in recent years, Metro Cities or the league has advocated for serious changes. In a lot of cases, it's just being able to have a policy on record so that they can respond if it does come up.
So how do we get the, this into the public's eyes to read?
It's on you, you got it. Any other discussion?
I'll do that second.
Motion to adjourn till Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
The motion's on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes three to two. Councilman Lehman.
Since it's on me, I'll make a motion directing staff to make this information available to the general public in any way, shape or form.
We can certainly post it on the website.
Do you wanna have a little more specificity to that?
No, you left it to me. I trust staff is able to do that.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Standing by Council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, any other business? That was a long aside on the night, Councilman Lehman.
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, November 20th at 7:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously, we are adjourned at, uh, 8:36.